I'll make that motion.
Motion by Francis? I have a motion by Francis to adopt the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries four to zero. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business this evening is visitors to be heard. We do have one visitor to be heard, so before we open up the podium, I will read our public comment. Public comment is a courtesy extended to persons wishing to address the city council who would like to comment on something that is not part of a public hearing. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Maple Plain. Speakers may approach the podium one time to make remarks that shall be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in public comment, please state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and should be made to the council as a whole. Personal attacks are prohibited, as are obscene, profane, and threatening language. Public comment is not a time for council discussion or response, but for hearing the speaker's concerns only. Questions to the council will be for clarification only. If necessary, a staff report on public comment subjects will be prepared for the next city council business meeting. We have one public comment this evening, please come forward to the podium, introduce yourself, and state your name and your address.
John Fay, 5819 Three Oaks Avenue. Madam Mayor, council, staff, hello, good evening. Council, I hope your position on tonight's recommendation to cede the city's authority to remain a local board city is to not give up control, period. Residents were not clamoring for a change to make everybody's life easier, so I'm not sure who's driving this recommendation. Our administration, or the county, or why this matter failed to get scrubbed at the workshop level first. But how we got here tonight is less important than how we keep the local in the local board. Tonight's packet repeatedly notes three reasons to give up your authority to remain a local board city. All other noted benefits in the narrative just fill space because from step one of the local board, the county is there. Heavily involved in the process and placing multiple safeguards that extend well beyond the city's role. So I'm going to debunk the top three. Number one, the burden to complete Minnesota Department of Revenue training. It's a 30-minute tutorial, you can't fail, it's valid for four years, and statute says only one board member must be trained. One. We currently have two, possibly three. There is no burden, I know firsthand, I did it twice. Number two, technical decision-making with potential uncomfortable consequences with residents. You're an elected official, plan to be uncomfortable sometimes, it's in the job description. Every day you study and make decisions on budgets, levies, property assessments, and contracts. You attend closed-door meetings on legal and personnel issues. You approve and deny planning and zoning matters, hold hearings, establish utility rates, plan capital improvements, and ensure the public safety. So I ask you, how would decision-making on local board matters differ from any decisions you make any other day? The answer is they don't and they won't. Number three, added administrative complexities. Let's see. Things like scheduling meetings, creating packets, holding hearings, working with the county, following proper noticing procedures, adhering to strict timetables and the law. You know, the stuff city administrators are trained and paid to do every day. To conclude, 99% of valuation questions and disputes are resolved with the county assessor well before the local board convenes, which traditionally makes the meetings very short and mostly uneventful. I see no reason for that to change. But if you do give up this responsibility, you're thwarting accountability by effectively saying, hey, don't look at me, it was the county. If you're still unsure, ask questions. I hope this spurs some discussion later tonight, as I know councilmember DeLuca and I have been proponents of maintaining local authority, and he's not here tonight to engage, offer history, or his insight. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. That topic will be on our agenda later, and we will have discussion then. Next item on our agenda is McGarry's Charity Golf Club presentation, so I invite general manager and owner, James, to the podium, if you'd like to say a few words and then we'll...
I would love to. All right, thank you all. I'm super excited to be here and be able to give back to our community. McGarry's Pub has been in Maple Plain for a little over 20 years. I recently took ownership about just, about two years ago. One thing that I hold near and dear to my heart is to be able to give back to this community. So four years now we've been doing that, and each year gets better and better. I have just over nine grand to give back today to West Hennepin Public Safety and Maple Plain Fire Department. The charity golf event at McGarry's will continue on forward. We've done it four years, it brings local, community, and businesses together for a great fun day while raising money for a good cause in our community, so thank you all.
Well, thank you, Chef. Chief Dennison and Chief DeRose are free to say anything if you'd like.
Well, I would certainly like to thank James, all the attendees, sponsors, and everybody that contributed to the event. I'm sorry that I missed it, I was away at training. I could have made the first day, but we also had to reschedule the softball game, and we know how that turned out later on anyway. But, thank you, James, this is just another example of a good welcome to Maple Plain and Independence and to WHIPS for me. I think it's fantastic, the support that you are giving to our agencies and giving right back into the communities who support these members and residents of the communities. I'm honored here to accept this from you, and I look forward to a long-lasting partnership with you and your staff.
Thank you, Chief DeRose, Chief Dennison.
Thank you, and I would just echo Chief DeRose's comments to James. I just so appreciate everything that you do for our fire department, which again allows us to give to our community using the money and the proceeds to benefit our fire department with equipment and purchase that we can use, again, that turns around and just benefits the communities that we serve. So I appreciate our relationship with you and everything that you do for the fire department and for our community as a business. Just stand up and you're always there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Dennison. And also with us tonight is Mayor Spencer from Independence. As many of you know, we have invaluable relationships and JPAs, and we're just grateful to have you here, and would you like to say anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'd like to invite forward the two chiefs, and James, and the mayors, and we'll do a photo op. All right. All that smile. All that sound. Thank you. Yeah, we can't either. Here, here.
Please make sure that makes it in the minutes.
It did.
Thank you all.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Mayor Spencer. Well, that's exciting. All right, next item on our business this evening is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda this evening is September 22nd city council workshop meeting minutes, September 22nd city council business meeting minutes, October 13th city council workshop meeting minutes, liability tort way you were, sewer jetting and television RFP, and Resolution 2025-102701, a resolution approving the quote for tax increment building certification, environmental investigation for the downtown redevelopment project, and the Third Amendment to lease agreement 2026 to 2028. If there are no questions, comments, or discussion, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councilmember Francis.
I'll second that motion.
Second by councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. The ayes have it four to zero. Next item of business this evening is accounts payable, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Our checks for accounts payable for the month of October totaled $189,560.76. Our ACH bills were $32,760.12, and our 2024 Street Project bills was $49,831.85. The reason that one is higher than usual is because the storm basin over here next to the school building was fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any questions regarding accounts payable this evening? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve items A through C on accounts payable.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councilmember Avizio.
I'll second that motion.
Second by councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Ayes have it four to zero. Next item of business this evening is our staff reports, and it is our quarterly staff reports, so we are fortunate tonight to have all of our staff here with us to verbally give their reports. So we will start with Chief Dennison.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. In your packet you have my third quarter staff report for the time period ending on September 30th of this year. And to briefly summarize that, in the third quarter, we responded to 83 calls for service. So at the end of the third quarter, we were at 288 total calls for service for the year. That compares with 279 calls at the same time last year, so up slightly from last year. Again, our calls for service, 63 of those calls are EMS calls, six alarm calls, three fire-related calls, four good-intent calls, and then seven hazardous-type calls. Gas leak, gas bill, wire down, et cetera. And then the next section of the report, broken down where the calls have occurred by the areas that we cover, and 31 of the calls in Independence, 46 in Maple Plain, two of them in the Three Rivers Park District, and four calls we gave mutual aid to another department. The next area on the report just talks a little bit about what we did for training in the third quarter. And we did kind of a mixture of different training through the third quarter with working with our confined space rescue ropes and harness systems. We've done some work with radio communications, and also did some air pack confidence training. We had a vendor come in and give us a three-hour classroom and hands-on course covering electric vehicles and how to handle fires involving electric vehicles. Recently, we purchased some specialty vehicle, specialty equipment to help us to work around electric vehicles. We purchased a fire blanket so that if we come across an electric vehicle that's on fire, it's something that would help us to put over the vehicle to control and contain the fire. And so we were able to get some training with that fire blanket with this company that came out and worked with us. Equipment update, we finally received our long-awaited replacement Tahoe truck. The purchase of the Tahoe that we have now from the Minnetoka Fire Department was completed, and that was put into service, and the old Tahoe has been decommissioned and ready to go to auction. So that's the equipment update. Personnel, at the end of July, we got approval to hire two new people, we had two applicants, and we brought those two people in through our hiring process and put them onto the fire department. Unfortunately, recently, one of them has turned in his resignation deciding that he just didn't have the time and understand the commitment that it took to be on the fire department, and it just wasn't the right time in his life for that, and so he's recently put in his resignation. Brief update regarding our consolidation works with the West Suburban Fire District, and through the third quarter, we continued to work towards our finalization date of December 31st, having transition team meetings with the West Suburban Fire District. And then August 21st, the cities of Maple Plain and Independence had a joint council meeting, where separately the cities both passed resolutions confirming their intent to proceed with the consolidation of Maple Plain and West Suburban Fire District. And we still are continuing on that and are on a great path continuing towards that consolidation and that finalization date, so we're excited for that. In the rest of the report, I've listed some calls of interest that we've responded to. We responded to a house fire in the 2200 block of Counter Road 92 in Independence, which luckily, not much damage, and nobody was injured. We also responded to a call for mutual aid to the mound fire department at the Presbyterian Homes in Spring Park, where a couple of people were injured in an apartment fire there, but it was quickly extinguished. We responded to Baker Park Beach for reported of a drowning, and when our crews arrived there, we assisted with CPR of a juvenile male, and that was there for part of a summer school program. The child was transported to the hospital, but unfortunately died from the incident. On the 1st of August, we responded to a vehicle crash involving a motorcycle on Sycamore Trail. We also responded to assist the West Suburban Fire District with a house fire on the 4100 block of Wild Meadows. And then in the 5600 block of Drake Drive, we responded to a resident that had collapsed in her garden, and unfortunately, after several minutes of CPR, we were unable to revive that person. Last thing that I put into my report was just some of the things that we've done this quarter, where we've done for community events, something outside of responding to the calls, which again is such a great thing for us to do, not responding to calls, but it's the fun things and the community participation, I think, and things like going to the Delano Fourth of July Parade. We assisted the West Suburban Fire District with the Hamill Rodeo. We assisted with the Long Lake 5K Run, the Tour de Tonka, Polo Classic, Night to Unite. We had a birthday party at the fire station for a resident with their child. Orno Discovery Center Vehicle Fair, and also the Orno Homecoming Parade. And, oh, and the Battle of the Badges, we were there too, so... But Matt said that, we know how that turned out, so... That's all I have for my report with this, I would stand for, any questions?
Questions for Chief Dennison.
I don't have a question, but I want to say thank you for being proactive, especially when you come across a hard call, getting that support for the firefighters when they need it. Thank you.
For sure, thank you.
I'd just like to comment, it's been fun at almost all these community events. It's been fun to see Maple Plain and West Suburban together, and just excited for that partnership and to see the relationships already forming, and yeah, there's a lot going on, and appreciate all that you and your staff do.
Thank you.
And sorry that you lost the softball game.
So close.
All right, with that, we will move on. Oh, next will be Chief DeRose from West Hennepin Public Safety with his...
Great segue. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Included in your packet tonight is the West Hennepin Public Safety September Activity Report. Included in that is a number of narratives and summaries of calls. I would like to call your attention to some of the statistical reporting that's included in the report. As you can see, we've responded to about 1,300 incidents in the city of Maple Plain this year to date, compared to 920 last year, so about a 42% increase. That's not, in my opinion, that's not anything to be concerned about, that's a big jump. But if you look closer at the numbers, 250 of those incidents are an increase in traffic stops in the city. And so we've got a couple of very eager traffic enforcers and educators, which I am proud and honored to work with. It's a passion of mine as well, working through, you know, the issues of traffic safety in the communities already, but also dealing with some specific complaints throughout the summer of speed and stop sign enforcement as well. The crimes are relatively on par, and then we're also, we saw an increase in medicals during this time period as well. So things that are very manageable for our staff, and they'll stay dedicated to that traffic safety and education. We participated in a number of the events that FIRE did as well. A couple to add would be Art in the Park, this was my first experience with Art in the Park, and I'm told that it was probably the biggest crowd that they've had. It was a wonderful event, well-attended, beautiful weather, just another great community event to get out and get to know people. The Discovery Center Vehicle Fair was held here even in the rain and the sprinkles, but still managed to have smiles on faces and hand out stickers and engage that way. The Highway 12 Coalition is back in full swing, and so I'm getting to know that group and the hard work that's being done there. We have managed to survive, knock on wood, audit season with three audits that have happened with West Hennepin. Chief Krails left and said, "Good luck, by the way," knowing that all these were coming. So the good news is, the great news is, that he set me up for success with the work that he did. So there was certainly no sweating making our way through that, and we certainly learned a lot going through that process. But one of the things I'm most excited about that's not included in the packet is last week, our new officer, Mason Spikele, started with West Hennepin. He shows up to work every morning with a big smile on his face, and he leaves work every day, says, "Good night, we'll see you tomorrow." And he's got that big same smile on his face, which I love. He'll spend a couple of weeks in the office, working on some office and classroom-type training, and then we'll get him out in the car here, I believe, at the end of next week or the early of the following week, where he'll spend the next three to four months learning from our field training officers and others as he gets integrated into the department, into the community. We're excited to have him, he's going to be a great addition to the team, and I can't wait for you all to meet him if you haven't already and just get to see him around town. He's a fantastic human being, and I hope he's got a, he has a long and prosperous career at West Hennepin ahead of him. So with that being said, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have and address anything specifically in the report or outside of the report that you may have.
Councilwoman Francis.
I just want to say that, West Hennepin, I'm very grateful for your officers. I had an incident about almost three weeks ago, and Officer Zillis was amazing. He managed to keep me calm, even though I was freaking out in pain, and it was just, it was a relief to see a friendly face. So I thank you for all that your officers do for our community and for all of our residents.
Glad to hear that, thank you.
And again, it's been fun seeing you and all of your staff out and about. I think one thing you didn't hit on, the Drug Task Force has been doing amazing work, so kudos to them as well, and we're proud to have staff a part of that organization and partnership. And congratulations to you and your staff for winning the Battle of the Badges, and we love all of our hometown heroes and look forward to a rematch next year on the third Monday, so, all right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll hear from engineering, and I'm not sure who to turn it over to, we got two of you, so you guys...
Yeah, we're lucky, and you're lucky to be surrounded by all kinds of engineers tonight. And I'll take the lead on this report, but Matt's here to help answer questions if you have anything specific. As you know, a lot going on in the city right now, much of which involves Bolton Mink and our partnership with you. A couple of things to highlight here, one thing that we always have ongoing is just infrastructure planning, talking about things that maybe need immediate attention, but also looking to the future just to make sure we're staying proactive in taking care of water, sewer, streets, the things that residents and business owners rely on every day. We've also spent time then looking at and evaluating various funding sources for those projects as we look to get those things done, how we're going to ultimately fund them, whether it's with funds that the city normally works with, or looking outside of the city for potential grants and other funding opportunities. We've had some correspondence related to the MS4 program, I believe you talked about that in your workshop tonight, where the criteria for that program has changed, so there may be an opportunity for the city, if you so choose, to opt out of that program. Also, a lot of work going on with the water use study for the city of Medina. I believe we just got a draft of that out here today, so that work is getting towards its conclusion. We've confirmed with the city of, or the Department of Health that we're going to continue with the lead service line evaluation and replacements moving into 2026, and then also have spent time with the midco permit oversight for the new fiber insulations, which includes some damage that's been done to some infrastructure around town as that's gotten in as well. Downtown redevelopment, a lot going on with that. We have been working with city staff on the LRIP grant application that you approved here, I believe at the last meeting. So work is starting with that, working with staff to talk about how to engage Hennepin County, also looking to secure other letters of support from other parties and local stakeholders to keep that moving along and hopefully ultimately lead to a successful application. And then we've also been working with city planner also on just scope of that project, specifically Main Street, Maple Point, and I'm sorry, Maple Avenue, as to the configurations of those streets, how they're going to fit with the new development, and then laying out a process, because some of those, some of the costs of that project will be assessed, working through the 429 process and making sure that everything's in place to move forward with that. And then lastly, the street reconstruction project, the 2024 project, as was noted with your payments tonight, the infiltration basin work has been completed now. And as you can tell, that some restoration has been done out there, but we are holding some money back, anticipating in the spring will be some cleanup work from a turf restoration standpoint. But hopefully that's going to address some of the issues we're having with that area staying wet. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for the engineers.
I have one, just wondering where we're at with the lead service lines, how many homes still need to be checked?
Can I answer that question?
Thank you.
I think there are about 100 homes that were not responsive still. So this round, we did a couple mailers, and we did door knocking towards the end. And yeah, only 10% of the people that hadn't responded the first rounds were able to get through, or were participating in this round yet. So there, we're hearing that there's going to be a third phase of investigation, which may be more of where the city can control what they're doing. We don't necessarily have to get into the houses yet, but I'll share more of that next year when we have more details on it.
Okay, I appreciate that, Matt, and if there's anything we can do to be proactive, I know some residents have reached out, "Hey, is this legit, what's going on, do I need to let these people in, what is this? Can I drink my water?" I mean, it just, it runs the gamut. So if, if we can just be in communication with staff and anything we can do with the leaflet, the newsletter, just communication to help in the process would be appreciated.
Yeah, okay.
I think that would be a good idea, I think we can certainly provide you with some educational materials that you can get out various ways, just to let people know what's going on with that.
That would be great, I'd appreciate that. All right, thank you, thank you for your continued work. All right, next we will hear from Public Works, Dave Medina.
Honorable Mayor, council, staff, all first responders, nice to meet you guys. Well, last time we met, I was fresh off the hatchery, wasn't I? Well, I'm the guy burning all the money. We've been busy, we've been doing a lot of work, we're destroying your town and slowly fixing it back together. We took away your salamander pond over here and made it drain now. We fixed Popular and Willow, have you guys ever taken a gander over there? It flows now, we don't have a lagoon no more. We've been busy with midco poking everywhere, destroying everything, but we're getting there. I mean, we've had over 250 locates that we've... I mean, we've had over two-hundred-and-fifty locates that we've had to do. I think we've located everything in this town now. Everything's either painted or flagged. I'm sure everybody hates the flags. Um, as far as everything else, I mean, we passed all our MDAH reportings. We have all our water quality parameters good. All our fluoride and, uh, back tees have passed. We got good drinking water now. Everything, knock on wood, no pun intended, right? Everything looks good as for our backup power. Our left, all our generators have been serviced, inspected through, uh, interstate power. All our backflow preventers by Yale Mechanicals, and our lift stations have been back cleaned and serviced this year by Quality Flow. So we're good, hopefully going into winter with no problem. Um, as for everything else, let's see. We have, uh, a couple of big problems we have to deal with over on Oak Street and County Nineteen. We still have to digest that one. That's gonna be a good headache. And, um, all the repairs that we've done, I mean, it's getting there. Someone's gonna pay for it. Um, we have fixed several hydrants in your town, so the one in Clayton is fixed. It's been out of service for a while on the cul-de-sac. That was repaired with me and, uh, Minnesota River Water, we rehabbed it and put it all back together. You had another one on Drake that was leaking in the substructure. Found out it was the rubber puck that sits on the very bottom of the flute there. But that one's operational now, so let's just hope we need them when we need them, right, boys? As far as everything else, I mean, you see my white truck running around with the yellow light all the time. I'm always here. I always answer my phone. Any questions?
Any questions for? Any questions for Public Works? Well, thank you, and I know this weekend, I believe you got called in at three in the morning.
Yeah, big mess.
Yeah, it was a hot mess, so.
We got through it.
Yeah, all right. Well, we appreciate you.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll hear from Mr. Cultis, our city planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council, uh, for the month of October. Planning's been doing quite a few things. One of the, uh, things we've been spending a lot of time on and, uh, Dave and Matt are here to talk about a little bit more tonight, is the downtown redevelopment project. So, uh, we've been working on moving a, uh, project forward to the point where they are, um, uh, now going to submit for preliminary plat, site plan approval, and a planned unit development to develop that property. And so, um, I saw the application actually today, so it should be, should be here, um, tomorrow, I think, actually, with all the other things that you need, like your money and stuff. So, uh, fairly exciting, though, to have that finally, uh, coming forward as a real application. It's the first time we've gotten this far in the process with a redevelopment project, so we'll see how that goes. So, uh, spending a lot of money, or a lot of time on getting that done. Um, a couple of other things that we have, um, in the works, uh, is, I think a lot of you know, North Shore Gymnastics submitted an application, came forward, uh, through Planning Commission to develop a new facility, um, uh, off of Pioneer Creek in the industrial park. They've run into some stuff that they're working through with cost, uh, implications for the project, and they're just trying to kind of, uh, relook at what that is gonna do. So we've had a couple of meetings with them to try to just see if there's anything we can do to help, um, uh, relook at that project to see if they can get it to a point where cost-wise, they feel comfortable moving forward. Um, so I do anticipate, though, that to come back around. And then the other, uh, property that I think most of you know has been for sale for quite some time is the old Wink, uh, Engineering Building, um, off of Highway Twelve. Uh, Jacob and I actually met last week with a potential buyer of that facility. And I think, um, uh, based on our meeting, based on what they talked about, we should be actually seeing something come forward, uh, for the redevelopment of that site, keeping the buildings in place, but kind of reimagining the use for that, uh, building and that property. So something to, to think about, maybe get that property back into circulation as kind of a usable piece. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, talk about any other detail in the report.
Thank you. Um, next. Next, we'll hear from Administration and Finance, and I'll turn it over to Jacob Pachui.
Uh, thank you. I'll start, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, the Hawk Signal has finally been fixed, um, so we're very happy about that. Uh, Kilmer Electric apologizes that it took so long. That's obviously out of their control to get the part, but it's been fixed. Um, we've had a, a couple sewer lines and water lines, um, that midco's contractor has, um, bored their, uh, fiber lines through. Those have all been fixed. And then just, uh, this last week, we had a sinkhole on Highway Twelve from a manhole. So I'd like to publicly thank, uh, Valley Rich, uh, Dave Medina, and Min Dot for very quick, and Matt Baumann, uh, for very quick response, and we got that fixed right away. So it was great that everybody could come together so fast to get that done. Mark and I have also been looking at the fire service agreement and the lease agreement with West Urban Fire District. Um, that just came back to us, um, let's see, today's Monday, Friday, I believe it was. And Mark, myself, and the city attorney, uh, reviewed some changes that they had submitted to us, and we're sending it back, uh, to them for their second review. And, uh, the only other big thing to note, um, code red has been used for many years, um, for emergency alert notifications. The city of Maple Plain, uh, and working with, uh, West Hennepin Public Safety is going to a program called Civic Ready. That information is on our website, uh, was also in the newsletter. Why the change? Uh, it costs less money, and it has way more bells and whistles. Weather alerts, notifications, um, it's just all around a great, uh, great program. Um, so if you are getting alerts from code red, you are automatically, uh, signed up for the same alerts with Civic Ready. But I, um, invite everybody to go to our website and, uh, subscribe to those alerts. The only other big thing is I got married. So, um, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you for that update, and congratulations. Uh, questions for Administrator Colander? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, in your packets tonight, you have the third quarter financial report. This report looks at unaudited, um, financial information as of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, looking at page three of that report, um, this gives you an overview of the cash and investments, comparing the third quarter of twenty-twenty-five to year-end twenty-twenty-four. Um, cash and investments are, um, below that twelve-thirty-one number by about eight-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. And we'll get into some of the details of that later. On the next page, this is a graphical representation of the general fund cash balances. Um, this shows two years of actual information, or two full years of actual information, as well as the nine months of twenty-twenty-five. Um, if you look at the trend lines, cash is trending the same as it has the last two years. Flipping forward two pages in this report, we get into the budget-to-actual information for the general fund. Looking at the general fund, revenues are under the prorated third-quarter budget by about three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, and expenditures are over budget by about a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. Looking at those revenues, the majority of, um, the variances to that prorated budget are due to timing of receipt of property taxes and, um, local government aid and other, um, state aids that come in. Um, there's also been an increase in licenses and permits and charges for services, and those are directly related to, um, the, um, QuickTrip and the fees related to permits. Looking at the expenditures, um, the items that jump out the most here are in Public Works. Um, that department is over budget by about seventeen thousand dollars, and that's due to contracted mowing services and then the organics recycling development. We've also completed all of the, um, budgeted transfers out for the year, as well as completed the, um, twenty-thousand-dollar transfer that the council approved in July. Moving forward two more pages, this is a detailed, um, summary of the cash and investment balances by fund. So again, cash and investments is below that December number by about eight-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars, and this just breaks out the funds. Um, so we touched on the general fund. The main reason for that variance is due to timing of those revenues coming in. Looking at the debt service funds, um, those are due to timing of receiving tax settlements, as well as timing of those debt service payments. Those debt service payments are, um, oftentimes in February, where we don't get the revenues to, uh, support those payments until July. Um, looking at the park improvement fund, um, this variance is due to, um, those transfers and some donations that were received. The capital project funds, this is due to transfers as well. Those transfers coming from the general fund and the stormwater fund. The twenty-two, um, sorry, the twenty-twenty-four street reconstruction project, um, that cash has dipped down, and that's due to, um, those project expenses, and, um, those offsetting revenues will be adjusted here in the fourth quarter. Looking at the enterprise funds, um, the water and sewer funds, the main reason for those variances are due to timing of those debt service payments again, and we'll touch on some of the operating information in a few minutes. Um, looking at the stormwater CIP, that variance is due to, um, bond payments as well. If we go two pages further, this, um, is a chart showing the details of the cash and investments for the city. So, um, each of the investments that the city holds, we mark to market value each month, and this is just showing that performance over the first nine months of the year. And then the next page, um, shows more of a graphical representation of the, um, distribution of the cash and investments that the city holds. The next page looks at the fire fund. With this fund, we're again looking at the prorated budget for twenty-twenty-five compared to the actual, um, revenues and expenditures. Revenues are, um, just under budget by about seven thousand dollars, and expenditures are over budget by about twenty-six thousand dollars. Those revenues, um, are under budget mainly in the intergovernmental area. The fire state aid comes in, in October, so we'll see that in the fourth quarter. And then looking at the expenditures, um, salaries, um, firefighters are paid quarterly in the month following the end of the quarter. So that will, um, be right-sized here in the fourth quarter for those third-quarter wages. And then vehicles, um, this was the purchase of the Tahoe and some higher-volume repairs on vehicles. And then in miscellaneous, we had a pass-through para-contribution from the fire relief. And then the graph at the bottom of this page compares revenues month by month for the last two years, and we're right on trend there. Flipping forward two more pages, we look at the water fund. The water fund, um, we are comparing the September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five revenues and expenses to that same period last year, so September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, revenues are over, um, the amount last year by about ninety-six thousand dollars, and expenses are, um, also above by about thirty-six hundred dollars. Um, most notably in the revenue area, um, those charges for services. Charges for services are due to connection fees, again, for that QuickTrip development. Special assessments, we've been receiving some special assessment, uh, payments this year. And then there was, um, a substantial reimbursement for water main and hydrant repairs in that miscellaneous line. Moving forward two more pages to the sewer fund. The sewer revenues are above the same period in twenty-twenty-four by almost two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars, and expenditures are over that same period from twenty-twenty-four by about a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. The most notable items here are in charges for services and special assessments in revenue. And those charges for services are due to, um, turning off the winter water, um, averaging calculation for sewer, and then additional connection fees for the new constructions. And then in the expenditures are operating and debt service. Um, those operating variances are, again, due to those connection fees. So it's money that we're taking in, and then we have fees that we have to pay out for those, um, wastewater services. And you can see the jump in revenue here in August in the graph at the bottom of this page for those, um, connection fees. Moving forward two more pages, again, we look at the stormwater fund. Stormwater revenues are over the same period of twenty-twenty-four by about sixty-four hundred dollars, and expenses are over by about twenty-two thousand dollars. Revenues are pretty well in line, um, nothing to call out there, but looking at the expenses, um, operating is a variance of about fifteen thousand dollars. And that is due to, um, drainage repairs and engineering costs related to that. The remaining pages of this report are the detailed financial system, um, reports with revenues and expenses. So you can see those line item details. Um, with that, we'll take any questions.
Any questions regarding administration or finance? Thank you. All right, with that, I am looking for a motion to receive all of our staff reports, uh, this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Francis.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Just wanna say thank you to all the staff, um, for being here and for the, um, great work. We appreciate you. All right, with that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The ayes have it four to zero. We have no old business to come before us this evening, so we will move on to new business. First item of business this evening is the transition from Local Board of Appeal and Equalization, the LBAE, to the Hennepin County Open Book, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we'll be considering, uh, transferring the city's local Board of Appeal and Equalization Authority to Hennepin County under their open book system. Uh, currently, the Maple Plains City Council acts as the local Board of Appeals and Equalization to give property owners a forum to contest their property's assessed value. The powers of the board, uh, include, um, adjusting individual property valuations, uh, change, uh, property classifications, add omitted, uh, properties to the assessment rolls. While the local board, uh, fulfills a statutory role, there are some challenges with this model. Uh, the training burden, uh, for extensive annual state mandated training. Uh, the board, uh, requires councilmembers who are not assessors, uh, to make complex valuation judgments. The open book alternative through the county, under Minnesota statute, a city may choose to transfer, uh, its local board appeals and equalization powers to the county. Hennepin County offers the open book process, which allows residents- Hennepin County offers the open book process, which allows residents to meet directly with county assessors to review their property. The benefits to the homeowners or the property owners is accessibility with multiple meeting locations and extended hours, direct one-on-one meetings with appraisers, immediate correction to property data, and a less formal and intimidating environment for public hearings. Benefits to the city, reduced training burden, fewer confrontational hearings, greater efficiency relying on Hennepin County's professional assessors. Before the county, or before the the city council here, there is a few different options that we can move forward with. First and foremost, keep the local Board of Appeals and Equalization in Maple Plain, which is the current model. A second option is offer up a limited transfer of authority to the Hennepin County. That's under Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten twenty-seven dash zero one, which, to summarize, this transfers the power to Hennepin County for a minimum of three years. The city could reassess in twenty twenty-eight whether to resume local control or continue with the county. Or the third option is to permanently transfer of authority. This is under Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten twenty-seven dash zero two, which permanently transfers the power to Hennepin County. All appeals would then would be managed under the county's open book framework. The staff recommendation is that based on county support and recent city council workshop discussions, staff recommends that the city of Maple Plain permanently transfers to the local Board of Appeal and Equalization Authority to Hennepin County. Thank you, and I'd be open for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Assistant Administrator Larson. Questions? Administrator Coleander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Kevin, if you would open Exhibit Four. Attachment. And then go down to the map. And blow that sucker up. So the, the cities in blue are open book. The cities in green do their own local Board of Appeal. The cities of Edina, Maple Grove, Medina, and Minnetonka Beach have also now, since this map was created, gone to open book. So I wanted to throw that out there and then answer questions.
All right, thank you, Administrator Coleander. Questions from other council members or staff?
All right, I would just like to take a minute and provide a little bit of history because our workshops are not recorded and just clarify a few things so people are aware and in transparency. So the history is, in order for things to get on an agenda, they first need to be brought up by someone, so this was brought up at a workshop by me. I brought this up. I'm part of a group called the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, which is fourteen surrounding cities, and the mayors we meet, and annually every year, Josh, the Hennepin County Assessor, comes in and speaks to our group. So I did bring this up at a workshop, asked for it to get on an agenda, there was consensus from council, and then it was on an agenda. I cannot recall the exact date, but it was at some point this year, so we did talk about it then after it was posted and on the agenda at great length, and it was agreed that it would come before council. And as with anything, there is not always full agreement, and that's part of making decisions and the process. So but before anything is official, council is just, at the workshop, it's discussion only, and business can only happen in a business meeting, so that's why it is here today again. And some of the reasons why I brought this up and advocated for it with the council is, and just want to clarify, staff did not initiate, that it did start with me, is financially, we all are already paying taxes into Hennepin County. They are the professionals, they're trained, they know how to do this, there's nothing with your neighbor, your business. It's the professionals that know what they're doing, it's in their lane, it's a service that they provide and that we're already paying for, in addition to all the money we're spending on public hearings, the postings, in the newspaper, all of that stuff adds up, and there's, as you have seen, multiple believe, there can be multiple meetings related to this. And with regards to local control, I am a huge advocate of local control, and it is something I am very, very passionate about, and I do not feel like we are giving up any local control in this, I feel like we are actually gaining and that we are giving all of our residents more options. So when we stay with what we have, you get one chance. You get one chance to show up, and it's here, and if you can make it, great, and if you can't, then you've got to work something else out if it works out. If we go to open book, last year and, or this year in twenty twenty-five, there were six different meetings, they were as close as Plymouth, Mound, and Virtual. And they're not, show up within three minutes, we call, if no one's here, you're done. The virtual one was all day. Most of those are three to four hours, and again, you're working with people who are professionals. So I feel like we're actually giving our residents more options, more opportunity, and again, it's a service we are all already paying for in our taxes. So that's just a little bit of history and why I advocated for it, why, and the process and how it got here. So this is at least the third time that this group of five, unfortunately tonight it is only four, are hearing it. So hopefully that helps with some clarification and why I will be voting the way I will be voting this evening.
Councilmember Francis.
Can you list off the cities that have, since this map was created, that have gone to open book?
Yes, Councilmember Francis, Edina, Maple Grove, Edina, Minnetonka Beach.
Medina or Edina?
Both.
Both.
Both, okay. Okay, and then follow-up question, there's, we have three options, but two of them, we can go temporarily to open book for three years, or we can go permanent open book. What is the advantage, disadvantage of doing one versus the other?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So the advantage to doing like a three-year model is that it forces the council to then relook at the open book policy and whether or not if the council wants to bring that back in, whereas if it's permanently done, there is no more, there's not the reveal process where it's like bookmarks and you have to do it at this point. It's kind of, we can always bring it back, but it's, but you have to go through the, it has to be approved by the state and then also approved by resolution.
So to clarify what you just said, then, if we do the temporary route, we have to do it a minimum of three years?
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Birak.
And then the process, if we did want to reverse this, I understand the three years would be the set timeframe, but the third option, that would actually have to be, we'd have to get the state involved to be able to get that corrected?
Yeah, that's correct.
That would not be any more than communicating with the state. It's.
Correct, it's filling out a form.
Yeah, it's paperwork.
Sorry, sorry, I should have made sure that was clear.
There's no fees or.
Right, it's just the state.
Before boards and. Councilmember Francis.
I would like to recommend that we do the three years and revisit it in twenty twenty-eight.
That's a recommendation, is that a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we choose the option of three years of going, of having the county do open book.
All right, there is a motion on the table for approval of the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten twenty-seven dash zero one for limited transfer of the local Board of Appeals and Equalization Authority to Hennepin County. Is there a second?
I will second that one.
Seconded by Councilmember Birak. Is there any further discussion or questions? Councilmember Arvizo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like, I think I must have missed that workshop because I don't recall listening, hearing about this before, I guess you did say that, but I feel like this is, I need more time to think about this personally and to get some feedback as, with respect to our citizens here in Maple Plain.
Well, I hear and appreciate what you're saying, there is a motion and a second on the table, the packet has been public since Wednesday, so we have had time. All right.
I feel like that's not enough time, honestly, three, I still think this is something that's, a decision that's not, should be taken within a week or six days, five days, I cannot do math right now, but I feel like, you know, that's just still not enough time to really sit down and think about things, and what is around vacations of doing it, yes, it's just three years, but is that, is that logical amount of, you know, is that, I need to see logic in it, I guess, I'm trying to understand more, so yes, but I understand, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arvizo.
Arvizo, please.
Pardon.
Sorry.
Any further discussion or questions? Councilmember Birak.
I just want to say, what is really making me look at this is availability. The fact that we have our local press and our local publications are getting harder and harder to come across, especially out here, that this allows a more of a timeframe that they can actually respond to instead of just one day, one publication here. That's why I'm leaning my way.
Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Birak. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I would like to call for a roll call vote. Administrator Coleander.
Councilmember DeLuca is absent. Councilmember Arvizo.
No.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Birak?
Aye.
Yes. Mayor Moskowitzki?
Yes.
Motion would pass three to two.
Motion, three to one with one absent. Motion carries three to one with one absent. All right, next item of business this evening is our firefighter wage increase, and I'm going to turn that over to Administrator Coleander first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We discussed at the last workshop a wage increase, sorry, I'm pulling up my notes at the same time that I'm talking. The firefighters currently make fourteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. With the transition to West Suburban Fire District this last quarter of the year, their firefighters make sixteen dollars an hour, so that everybody's on the same and equal pay for this last year. Recommendation from myself and from the fire chief was to do a dollar fifty increase, making that wage sixteen dollars per hour to match West Suburban.
Thank you.
The only thing that I would add in that is what I had asked for in the recommendation was to now make it retroactive back to the first of October so that it is for this full quarter.
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
All right, questions for staff regarding this? I think it's a good idea, continue to help to make the merger seamless, to help with staffing, and you're all going to be together, you're now training together, everyone stays doing the same thing, working with the same leadership. I think it's going to help, and I hope it will continue to help to make the merger seamless, so I am definitely in favor of it. Questions or comments? Councilmember Francis?
I support the issue before us to do the pay increase. I do agree that it's important that everyone be at the same rate when they're working together for training and responding to calls. It will make the transition that much easier, so I fully support it.
Councilmember Birak?
I know I've asked this question with the city staff, but I want to make sure the funds are there, correct? Administrator Coleander?
The increase would equate to about twenty-five hundred dollars if we take the same call as the previous quarter.
So the funds are there, and honestly, our first responders, they don't do it for the paycheck, and I think we do need to support them, and I'm for the dollar fifty increase wages because it's a tough job.
Did you have something?
No, I was just trying to get him to do his.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All right, with that, then, I am looking for a motion to approve the firefighter wage increase.
I'll make that motion.
Retroactive, excuse me.
I will make that.
Retroactive to October first.
I will make that motion as stated.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Birak.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Councilmember Birak, seconded by Councilmember Francis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The ayes have it four to zero. All right, next item of business before us this evening is the twenty twenty-six industrial street project fee estimate, and I'm not sure Administrator Coleander or Matt, okay.
Yeah, I'll jump on this one, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, so back in April, we actually met and discussed, kind of the, annually, we discussed the capital improvement plan, and so that looks about ten years, and so we're always trying to keep a long-range look on keeping the city up to, up to par and functioning well. So there's two, we've split it up into two projects for next year, and I'll explain a little bit about why that would be. So the first proposal is for industrial street, so that is scheduled to be a mill and overlay project, so that, that is typically not assessed, but there's a section of the roadway between Bud Avenue and Poplar Avenue that the water main is going to be replaced and upsized, and so that piece could be assessed, and so for that reason, that one's going to be separate than the downtown reconstruction project. They're going to move, they're going to move at slightly different speeds and compete different contractors that do the work. So with, in that, we put together our estimated costs, so about sixteen thousand six hundred dollars to do the feasibility study, engineering work, about just under fifteen thousand dollars to do the topographic survey, and then we've reached out to Hago Geotechnical Services to do soil boardings for that, for that project, so as far as the engineering piece of it, it'd be about thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars for Bolton Mink Services there. We would propose to have an open house with assessed properties and probably a workshop or two with the council as well to get, to get through the feasibility study for industrial street. So with that, I'll take questions on the first one, and then we can talk more about the downtown reconstruction.
Questions for Matt regarding the twenty twenty-six industrial street feasibility study services. All right, with that, then, looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six industrial street improvements feasibility study service.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Francis?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Birak. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The ayes have it four to zero. Next item of business is the twenty twenty-six downtown redevelopment project.
Yeah, so, thank you, mayor members of the council. So the next one here is the redevelopment project, we, I think we might actually call it the reconstruction project, it'd be a little bit confusing with what Mark's working on with the, with the housing project that's, that's coming for, that was just submitted, I believe. So anyway, so the downtown project proposes to reconstruct Main Street East as the main piece of it, but then a bunch of the streets that run north-south, so Poplar Avenue, Spring Avenue, Marsh Avenue, Delano Avenue, and Maple Avenue, and then related to that, we've looked at reconstructing the fire station parking lot. And then, uh, related to that, we've looked at, uh, reconstructing the fire station parking lot, and a big chunk of that project will also be stormwater management, so we would be looking into the, kind of the public works, fire station property over there to, to do some of the stormwater treatment required for the project and the, the downtown, uh, development. So we put together a, a fee estimate, again, assuming that this project would be assessed, and we'd, uh, require a feasibility study, we'd have an open house and workshops with the council. We estimate approximately two hundred forty hours of staff time, uh, the cost of forty-four, a little over forty-four thousand dollars for that piece. We'd like to get going on the topographic survey and soil borings, um, so about a hundred and eighty hours of staff time and thirty-three thousand dollars to do that piece. And then Hago Geotechnical would do the soil borings again to confirm, so we can fine-tune the, the design of the roadway and any, blanking on the word here, any, uh, adjustments that are needed to the, to the road base there. And that would be a separate piece to that. And so probably the best, uh, way to see all this is the capital improvement plan map, Kevin, if you can go to the very end. Uh, that one, and then, and then we did talk, I believe, at the last city council meeting about the local road improvement plan grant that we are applying for, that's another piece of this that we're, um, worked that, worked through with the, getting county approval or county support, which they sound like they're on board for that, and then, um, and getting in, um, getting submitted for the grant application, and hopefully successful outcome of that that we would find out about in March. I believe that's it for me, if you have any questions?
Questions for Matt? And I'm assuming we're going to want to approve both of these, since they're two separate? Well, that's true. Okay, so I think we're good.
Yeah, yeah, so there's two colors on the, the map. Um, that was meant to just kind of show the delineation between the LRIP piece and the city, this a hundred percent city-funded pieces.
Perfect.
But the, uh, Spring, Marsh, and Delano, we would not be submitting any LRIP application for those pieces of the street project.
But one project from a construction.
But one, one for a construction standpoint, and then, so this is going to go with a little bit slower pace just because we have to do the LRIP submittal, and then it'll have a little bit more state oversight as far as review process. So that's why we split off the industrial street piece from this as well.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, great. All right. Then our next item of business this evening, Administrator Coleander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If, uh, someone would be able to make a motion authorizing Bolton Mink to proceed with the feasibility study and related survey work for specifically the twenty twenty-six, uh, downtown project, that would be appreciated.
I'll make that motion exactly what he said, so we can find out what kind of dirt we have.
Uh, move by Councilmember Birak?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. Any further discussion or question? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the ayes have it four to zero. All right, next we'll move on to council reports and other business. Who would like to kick us off? Councilmember Francis?
All right, council reports, uh, I attended workshops, EDA, and a, a rebranding, uh, meeting this month. I want to say thank you to my fellow council members that have taken on extra tasks while I deal with some health issues, and it's greatly appreciated. Do not have my plate quite so full, so I can focus on my therapies and get back to baseline health. So it's been a good month, except for my little trip to the hospital. Thanks again to, to WHIPS for rescuing me. And that's about it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Birak?
Well, I, you know, we have had workshops and meetings and fire commission with the consolidation, but one of the things that Connie mentioned, I have stepped into the Rotary Club, uh, Ornol Rotary. That was a great experience. Um, just want to say, last Saturday, we picked trash on Highway twelve. I'm going to say this to anybody, go out and pick trash on the side of the road. It gives you a new understanding of what it takes to have a clean highway, what it takes to do things, and how we each individuals can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Chamber Commerce was fun, we got to learn about the, uh, invention? Or discovery of Duke Cannon? The, uh, it's a soap, I think, like shampoo and soap, more for men. Anyway, very interesting story, very fun. And then, of course, Chamber Commerce had their, uh, trunk or treat this weekend in front of Mc, um, sorry, St. McGarry, sorry, uh, Iron Exchange in Wordenew, Quick Trip will be, and that was well attended, even though the weather was kind of iffy. Um, as far as watershed goes, it was a light, lighter meeting to discuss about some new up, up and coming grants that we're going to try to apply for, and rolling out a new website design so that our watershed partner, Sarah Creek, will look similar to other watersheds in the, in the areas. And, uh, basically, our, um, I don't want to say rent, I don't know how you explain, you know, the websites will no longer be supported as is, so everything bro- breaks and, you know, we're kind of stuck. So ergo, we had to look for a new web host person, and so we're going to try to make sure that our watershed site is similar to other watersheds, and so it's easy for people to navigate, so, uh, other than that, that's, that's all that's.
Thank you. Um, one of the things we were able to do as being part of the Rotary is we served down at the Prior Lake, Lakefront Music Festival, and we were able to go to the celebration. Um, they raised over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and donated that back to all of the volunteer groups, so various nonprofits, so the Ornol Rotary, um, was a recipient of about thirteen hundred dollars from serving down there. And then that money will go to the Ornol Schools, in particular Strive, and to Veterans Programming. So just, again, another wonderful partnership, you know, between the city, the school, the Rotary, and just being part of something greater than ourselves. Um, I know Chief DeRose hit on this a little bit, but Art in the Park, again, just a fabulous event. They estimated they had over seven hundred in attendance this year, and that is a partnership with Ornol Community Education in the city of Maple Plain. So it's great to get people in the city and in our parks and using those facilities. Some of the Rotary speakers this month included Hope Chest for Breast Cancer, um, a pro hockey player, and then also we did some service work over on the Saga Hill Park, so go over and check out the walking path. We, um, built the ramps in there and we're working on that, so, um, some nice improvements. Was able to attend the Minnesota Mayors Association Fall Meetup, um, it was at the Arboretum, which was absolutely beautiful, and our speaker was from the state of Minnesota, and, um, it was on de-escalation strategies. So that was very informative and helpful. Was able to attend the Weekend Open House, which is, um, serves our residents here in Maple Plain. So grateful for that relationship as well. Was able to attend the Ornol Coalition, which we celebrated our second year, and, uh, really working on the nine-eight-eight and the raise awareness for Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, and you'll find those signs in our parks and in our schools, and just a great resource, um, for anyone, young or old. You can, um, text at any time, and that will be answered, nine-eight-eight. Uh, the Fire Department Open House was great, and it's always fun to watch the kids and just, um, be so excited and, uh, interact with the firefighters. Northwest Hennepin League Municipalities, this month Sheriff Witt came out and, um, shared about partnerships within the county and, and in our cities, and how we can work together and, um, in partnerships, so that was very informative. The LMC Board Meeting and the Forum Board of Trustees Meeting, really just working on budgets and legislative policies. So that's really exciting right now, and we're working on some of those, in particular, one fire-related. We've been busy with workshops, EDA, um, was super busy, Ornol Healthy Youth, um, the Chamber, as was alluded to, uh, Ryan O'Connell came from Duke Cannon, and just, it was built brick by brick right here in, um, Wayzetta, and they are huge supporters of veterans and first responders, so that was really cool. Personnel Committee Meeting, working on the Code of Conduct, uh, time cards. Fire Commission, obviously, has been consumed with the consolidation, and really, we're just kind of waiting, I think, on legal and being available and ready. Rebranding, we're getting ready to move forward, um, in that. Uh, the Truck and Treat Event, want to thank all of the businesses and the Fire Department and Police Department. We had eleven trunks and over fifteen baskets, so, uh, great event, a little cold, a little wet, but, uh, we're hardy Minnesotans and people showed up, so that was great. And then also want to invite everyone on November eleventh, again, this is in partnership with the Ornol High School and the Ornol Rotary, to the Community Veterans Day Program. Uh, the doors will open to the general public at eight-thirty, and then the program will start at eight-forty-five. The choir will be part of it, um, we have a veteran speaking, and it's always a very moving service and a great way to honor our veterans. So lots going on in our little city, so thank you for everyone for the, uh, role that you all play in it. Any other business to come before us this evening? Hearing none, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Francis?
Second.
Second by Birak, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the meeting's adjourned at eight-twenty.